All right, I have it as seven o'clock. I guess we should begin the meeting and I'm going to welcome everyone to the February meeting of the zoning board of appeals and I'm going to ask at this point if staff, if Garrett, you could call the role, please.
Yes, Commissioner Weiner.
Here.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Healy.
Here.
Commissioner Walsh.
Here.
Commissioner Nadeem.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn. Is absent. Christopher Cloud.
Here.
Christopher Callahan.
He's trying another one.
And Chairman Schoenhorst.
Here. All right, I'm going to at this point ask that the secretary call the or read the legal notice for tonight's meeting.
Notice is hereby given the zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Lay Jin, application for variance to locate shed other than required yard for property located at 70 Alpine Drive, R40 OS zone. Michael, Mikhail and Marlena Karzuski, application for variance to reduce front yard setback 40 feet to 30 feet for addition to existing home at 24 Hickory Lane in NR20 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at www.farmington CT.org about Farmington slash calendar dash meetings. A copy of this proposal is available online at www.farmington CT.org slash government slash zoning board of appeals or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325 dated at Farmington, Connecticut, February 2nd, 2023, Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, John Schoenhorst, Chairman.
All right, thank you. And for the first matter, we are going to, I'm going to appoint Commissioner Healy in place of Commissioner Llewellyn, who's absent this first hearing. And I'll just note for the record that the first matter on our agenda is Bob and Julie Thurison. That was a matter that we read in the notice and opened the hearing and then continued it to tonight's hearing for, I think, some technical matters of notice or whatnot. So that will be the first matter we are hearing tonight, even though it wasn't part of the announcement that was just made. So before we again, I'll just explain how this works. I know that we have Bob and Julie Thurison on the online meeting tonight. And before you begin, we will have you state your name, whoever's going to speak, your address for the record, and you can supplement your remarks, your written application and tell us why we should grant a variance for your particular property. So at your convenience, you will go first. If anybody, you have anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application that will follow after the commissioners have a chance to ask you any questions. And if there's anyone in opposition to your application, they will then follow with their remarks and et cetera. And then you get a final rebuttal if you wish. So with that said, please, whoever's going to speak on your behalf, please identify yourself and go ahead.
All right, good evening. Mine's Bob Thurison and we're at 36 Perry Street. And we'd just like to thank you guys for all being here for us tonight. Our carpenter, Tim, is also going to come on eventually here. He was having a little trouble with getting connected. But yeah, we'd like to do the the dormers basically on the garage for being with the width of the garage isn't just 20 feet. We'd like to be able to put both vehicles in there and my work van and my wife's car, which wouldn't provide much room at all, pretty much on the lower level for storage. So what we'd like to do is be able to have that capacity to have an indoor stairwell and then that'll bring, and Tim could explain better how it's going to go up to the second floor, but go up there. So we'd have storage up top as well as kind of the same reasoning as our house is is 100 and, you know, whatever it is, 150 years old and the basement storage is limited. So this would just provide us more storage and much easier access to get up there and much use of more usable space as opposed to without the dormer space.
Do you mind just before we turn to question, would you mind just sort of explaining the current status of this structure? It's my understanding it doesn't exist yet, right?
It does not. No, correct. We put the foundation down actually when we did our addition seven years ago, but just didn't have the funds to proceed. So we did put the, but the foundation has been down. So we had poured the floor just, just this whatever month or two ago. I think it was late, late last year, but then we're just, you know, in preparation for this. You know, looking forward to it, so.
All right. Is there anything that you wish to add?
Um, just, yeah, it would, it would be, I guess, for us to just be a certainly a bonus for us for certainly for storage. It's been a struggle with the house.
I think if you would at least tell us a little bit about why this is the location that you need to put it in. You're seeking a variance from the normal zoning regulations. So maybe that would be helpful.
Well, the variance was for the, I'm sorry, the variance was more for the height. It was a question on the height was the issue, not the actual footprint. But that was the, that was our problem. We needed the variance because of the way with the dormers that changed the actual calculated height is my carpenter would call it. The dormers made the, the way they measure, where they actually check the, adjust the height of the building or how they calculate the height of the building.
If I could speak, hopefully it's coming through. Yeah, hi. Sorry, I had a little trouble getting on, but my wife graciously figured it out for me. I mean, Bob, Bob said all.
Could you, could you please explain to identify yourself, please, for the record and your address?
Sure. My name's Timothy Corlett. I live at 7 Crosswood Road in Farmington. I've known Bob for a while and I'm going to be the kind of the builder of the garage for he and his wife.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I have heard everything Bob said. I kind of got on just when you guys were getting things started. And yes, the, the reason we're here is more of the height restriction than the placement of the garage. The proposed structure peak is set at about 20 feet. And the way the kind of the lower, just say the lowest roof eve, that would be somewhere around nine feet as an average to the grade. The grade is pretty level. So, you know, on one side, it might be eight, six, another, you know, in the front area is where I was basing it off of kind of where the garage door is would be about nine feet to the bottom of the roof. So when you, when you do that average, our, our average is still below the you know, median of 15 feet. But the, the issue really is there would never be a good way to access the second floor and also provide good vehicle, you know, storage and usage for them because the the structure itself is only, you know, 20 feet wide. So the only feasible way is to kind of put the stairs in the back back corner and have it come up a few steps to a landing and then turn and go up what is the west side where we would have to put a dormer of size to be able to just have the headroom so that you can, you can, you know, get up the stairs safely and not basically be walking into the roof. So that's really the main functionality reason for the dormers. And then, you know, aesthetically to only have one, and a structure like this, you know, aesthetically to only have a dormer on one side kind of looks a little silly. So you know, we, we drew it in or we're requesting to have it on the other side as well on the, the east side. Just to bring symmetry and, you know, kind of make that upstairs space a little more spacious from a floor square footage standpoint. And yeah, I mean, as Bob said, it's a the hardship for them is they, they do have a very old house that doesn't provide much in the way of storage in their basement. They don't have, they have a small shed on the property. They really don't have room to do pretty much anything else of, of storage, so to speak. You know, the house is, I would say, you know, kind of maxed out as far as what it can provide for storage. So you know, just trying to, to give them the best storage possible on that, that upper floor. Keep the stairs inside where it's safer and, you know, you'd never have to worry about. I mean, I guess if I go back a second, I mean, the only other option would be to put a staircase on the outside, but that's a sort of a safety issue and also just aesthetically, not as, as nice to look at. So keeping it to the inside, I think is just a better fit. And in order to do that, I think the dormers are necessary.
All right. Commissioner Weiner, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Marsh.
No.
Commissioner Healy.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Walsh.
No questions.
Commissioner Nadeem.
Hi, I just have one question. Are you not making it any wider because that would also require a variance or because the foundation was poured quite some time ago?
Correct. The foundation is, I forget the date, 2013, 2014.
15.
15, okay. Yes, it's been in, it's, it's kind of set. I mean, to add, to add on to it would be costly, you know, more costly than, than doing the dormers certainly to make the structure wider. And also it, their lot is, is not that wide to begin with. You know, it would really start eating into the, the little bit of backyard space that they have over there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Cloud.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Callahan.
Is the issue, I may ask this question in two different ways. Is the issue the fact that the dormers cause the height of the proposed garage structure to be higher or that they, the dormers change the means by which the highest point is calculated or some combination thereof?
The second, correct. The actual, the overall height of the building will stay basically right at around 20 feet, you know, again, depending on where.
And is that the maximum height in this zone?
I believe, I want to out, overspeak, but I believe it's somewhere around 20 or 21 feet.
Yeah, Garrett, I'm going to ask you to clarify what Commissioner Callahan just asked.
Yeah, my question may have been slightly misdirected. Thank you.
No, no, that's fine. I was, I was going to offer to jump in early just to explain a little bit more of, of why the variance is needed. So the maximum permitted height for detached accessory structures in all residential zones is 15 feet. And the height is measured from the halfway point between the highest eve and the peak. So without the dormers, the height of the building would be measured right, right about here, which is, I think it's 14 feet, six inches. So the peak can still be that 20. The, the peak of the roof depends on the pitch of the roof. But that, that 14 and a half feet would be, was where we would normally measure it. Because the dormers are so wide in the, it says 26 feet up here for the roof. It's a two foot eve on each side. So we'll just say it's 20, or I'm sorry, a foot on each side. So it's, it's 20, the garage is 24 feet wide of that 24 feet, 15 feet is made up of the dormer. Therefore, so therefore the majority of the height is a dormer. So that now we count this as the highest eve which is here. And so now we take the, the half, the height as being halfway between this eve and the peak, which is, I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
I think it puts it at 17 and a half.
Yeah, 17 and a half for 17 and a quarter. Now we would measure at the midpoint here as opposed to here.
Okay, so the total amount of the variance being requested as a result of the inclusion of the dormers in the design is about two feet.
Correct.
Okay. And is the claimed hardship the lack of storage available in an 150 year old home?
I would say that that's one of the main, yes, correct. That is the hardship. And, you know, at this point, not really being able to reconfigure a different garage setting, we'll just say, you know, where we could put a a larger footprint of sorts, but.
Is, is the dormer style consistent with other structures in the neighborhood?
I would say so. I know, I know several, you know, barn-like detached structures that you know, have this gambrel style, style roof to it with dormers. So.
All right, thank you. Those are the only questions I have.
All right, I have a few. Let me follow up first with you. I forgot your name, the builder there. You, your name comes up as the same as the applicant, Bob and Julie. So let me just be clear because I drove down Perry Street today. Are you saying there are other barn-like structures or garage structures with dormers on Perry Street in that neighborhood? Or are you saying that there are others in Unionville?
No, I am referring to Perry Street. So his neighbor there, he does, he does not have a dormer, but you know, very similar looking structure certainly, but further down Perry. On the riverside, there's a pretty substantial gambrel style structure that also has, you know, several dormers on it. You know, of size.
Okay. And if I could ask the applicants, what's directly behind where you're going to build the garage? What is the building we see behind the square?
That's on the photograph there. That's Maple Village.
Right. And what is the specific part of Maple Village? Is that an apartment directly behind there with the taller roof? Or is that some other building?
No, that's an apartment.
Right. And will the higher the higher roof angle in any way impair either the views or anything from the windows of the, of the dwellers in that apartment there on the second floor?
Those, I believe, the, their windows are to the sides. Yeah, those are the doors.
Those are just the doors?
Those are the access, their front door, I would say you could call it. And then their windows are on the sides facing east and, east and west.
So, so there's no windows facing that they'll be looking at a, at a, at a wall and a roof by, behind your but out there window is what you're saying, right?
Right, right. Correct.
Okay. Right. And are you, because you want to make this have dormers and light on both sides and an interior stairwell, are you considering using this either as living space or maybe as an accessory apartment?
No, we just need space.
All right. So, so you're not putting in any plumbing, right?
No, just electric.
So you would not object if we required as a condition that no plumbing be installed in this garage so that without special approval, it could not be used as an accessory apartment without further authority or approval by either our board or the TP and Z.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you. Is there anything that either you as the applicant or anyone speaking in your favor wants to say? Or do any of the other commissioners wish to? Let's do it first. Do you or your builder have anything else you want to add?
I don't believe so, not for myself.
All right. Do, do any of the commissioners want to ask any other questions? All right, hearing none, then I will just open the floor up to, does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? You can use the raise hand feature on Zoom to be recognized.
Chairman Schoenhorst.
Yes.
Can I interject? I like to apologize. Apparently the link on the agenda was incorrect. So no one is able to join the public hearing. Recommending that we just continue it until the March meeting. And then if anyone has any, if, if anyone from the public is present, we can do a brief run through the presentation. And, and, and then the commission can close the public hearing and vote. We did not receive any inquiry about this application at all. And it's been on the agenda for, this is the second month in a row and the signs have been out there the whole time. So we have received no inquiry. But in order to avoid any possibility of an appeal on a technical standpoint, staff's recommending that the commission just continue this hearing and the March hearing. I'm sorry. And then the other public hearings for this evening to the March meeting, you can still have the discussion since the applicants are here. And we'll just continue to, to march and vote and march if that's all right.
I, I think that will be fine. And if there is any inquiry, they could also probably access the video or audio and, or, and or the draft minutes without us needing to spend a lot of time at the next meeting, rehashing anything that we just went through tonight.
Correct. And, and if we do get any inquiries, we'll direct them to the, to the, to the recording of the meeting. They'll be posted on, on, online.
Okay. Well, I agree that as a result of the incorrect link being posted that we can't actually close the hearing tonight. So I apologize Mr. and Mrs. Thurison, that we can't vote then tonight. We'll have to wait till next month.
Yeah, that's kind of frustrating because we, we've already waited two extra months to try to get building and now it's a whole nother month that we're putting Tim behind and when is it going to be? March, what day will that be?
March 20th.
Okay, that's like a whole nother month.
Let me, let me just say this and I'll turn it over to the commissioners if they want. Because this would violate the Freedom of Information Act at a remote hearing, if we were to vote and anybody including people who are not your neighbors wanted to challenge this meeting and our vote, it would probably result in our decision being overturned, even if you started building. So I'm not sure, I, I apologize because.
Yeah, that's kind of frustrating. Like I just feel like a, the wrong link is kind of like a, I don't know, that just seems very frustrating. And I, I, I understand, but we actually have talked to every single one of our neighbors and they were kind of laughing, saying, I can't believe you guys had to send those letters out. That's the silliest thing. So I could almost guarantee you that no one's going to be against it, but technicalities, I get it. But it's just frustrating that the wrong link went out. I mean, obviously our, our builder, Tim, had the wrong link. That's why he couldn't get in. And we were at the last minute trying to send him the link somehow. I don't know how, but somehow we had the right link, but.
Well, it, that's going to be a discussion we're going to have a little bit later on in this meeting, but I'm just indicating that you know, we will close this portion of the of the hearing. We will vote on it at our next meeting. If, and if I'll tell you, if there's a specific hardship, I will put it out to members whether they would want to have a special meeting. It, it can't just be, in my view, because you would like to move forward quickly. It's still winter.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a hardship. I just feel like we, you know, we were already behind. And so we were just looking forward to doing it. It's not a hardship. I'll be completely honest. It's not a hardship. You know, it's not like we need it because something's happening in our house and we need it, but so I, I don't know. I, I just wanted to express my, yeah, I just wanted to express my opinion about the, the wrong link. That just seems kind of, I don't know. I just feel like that's something that like you check and you recheck, but you know.
Well, it's, it's part of the, it's, it's kind of like the Freedom of Information Act. If the newspaper art publication had the wrong date or the wrong information, it would be the same problem. So
Yeah.
It's, it's the law. Some of us are lawyers and I'm just telling you that.
No, no, I, I understand from that end. I definitely understand from that end. Yeah.
So I do apologize on behalf of both the board and, and the town. So
Yeah.
And hope for our understanding.
Yeah.
No problem. No problem.
All right. So does anyone else, since the, the chat function and the raise hand function is not going to work, is anyone else who is on this hearing wish to speak in opposition to the application? And I'll ask Mr. Dagel if he received any communications at all, email or otherwise concerning the matter.
No, we received no letters, emails or phone calls about the application.
All right. Then I will close the, the hearing and we'll continue the matter to the March, do you say 20th meeting?
Correct, March 20th.
March 20th, where we will simply take at that time have a motion unless somebody seeks to reopen the hearing to add something or to, to make further comment that, that there will be no other discussion. We will go right to vote at that time. All right. So we'll move on to the next matter. Lay Jin, application for variance to locate shed in other than required yard for property located at 70 Alpine Drive. And I will note that the link is the same problem for this hearing. Is that correct?
Correct.
So even though we'll be able to have the hearing this evening, we must leave it open. We cannot vote this month because of that same problem that we have just brought to, that was just brought to our attention. So
Correct.
I'm going to ask Mr. Dagel, if you could summarize the circumstance here for the applicant before we hear from him. And I will note from my reading of the summary that this is a situation similar to a couple of other times where there has already been the construction of a shed in violation of the zoning regs. And we are seeking or, and the applicant is seeking to retroactively obtain approval. Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay. So could you just briefly on behalf of the of the applicant, just summarize what, what he is seeking, please?
Yeah. So the, the property owners are on the call, Lee and his yeah, Legion, he is on the call, but I just wanted to explain the application to help, to kind of assist them. So the home is 70 Alpine Drive. It's low, Alpine Drive is located in Burlington. I believe if I show you the air photo. So here's the house 70 Alpine Drive. Alpine Drive is located here. The town line is located here. And this is Dunstall Close of the Bridgehampton Crossing subdivision. So I'm sorry about that. So because the lot is a corner lot, Dunstall Close has, has been roughly paved. Final course has not been done yet and it access isn't granted through to, to Bridgehampton Crossing yet, but so the property is a corner lot. It's, it's bounded by Alpine Drive and Dunstall Close, as I've already stated. Because it is a corner lot, sheds are allowed to be located. We call it in the rear quadrant of the property. So what we do is we find the midpoint of the property line, line along one, one street and the opposite property line and then do the same on the other street. And then adjust the line with the, the longest rear wall of the home. So this, this red box right here is the allowed area of a shed. I'll just point out for the board, there's this wavey line right here. That is the, the tree line. The property line is located here, but there's a buffer between the properties and then right here is a rain garden as a part, as part of the development. So the shed is looking to be located here. The driveway is here. The shed is looking to be located here. It's about 60 feet back outside of the rain garden. It's still accessible from the driveway. This dotted line is the 25 foot front, yeah. front, yeah, side yard setback, but because it's on a street, it's technically a front yard, it, it's, there's no good way to explain it without reading of the regulation word for word, but basically, when you have two street frontage, you have your regular front yard of forty feet on the main street wherever your house is facing, and then you have a side front yard of twenty-five feet, so the, the shed is just located right outside of that on the side. Um, and then there are some pictures of the shed from Dunstal Close. Here standing at the uh property line. Um, and then here is from the corner of Alpine and Dunstal Close, and here is from the back property line of uh the home on, the other home on Dunstal Close and the property here. Um, the statement, uh, the reasons that the, they're seeking for this is uh, location easily accessible to the garage, to the driveway for the snow blower and other lawn equipment. Um, it works to block view because it's a side property line from the road, and it helps to block the pond uh from their children, um, as it'll be, as the pond's now behind the shed as opposed to just being accessible from the road. Um, the shed's fairly low, I believe it's eight feet at the peak, or it's ten feet at the peak. Um, I believe it's eight feet, I'm sorry. So it's a, a fairly low profile shed. And the, the, as I said, the property owners are on the call if the commission has any questions.
All right, well, um, as the chair, I'm gonna um, exercise the privilege of asking questions first, so uh, Mr., is it Jin, am I pronouncing your name correctly, Jin?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Um, the reasons that you are given that is up on the screen right now, um, are these, did, when you built this shed, did anyone tell you where a shed was appropriate or not appropriate in the, for this property?
No, we are, we are the first time, you know, homeowner, we didn't know, you know, we need, uh, there's a regulation about where the shed's gonna be put in. And I do apologize that, but, you know, that's the first time we have the house and first time we build this shed.
Well, this is a new house, correct?
Yes.
And did the builder also build your shed?
No, uh, we, the house, we built the house about uh, ten years ago, almost ten years ago.
Okay.
That's the first time we'll put the shed here.
All right, and um, the, the, as I understand it, the, your front yard is in Burlington, but the house and this side of the property and your backyard are in Farmington, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And um, other than the reasons that you gave, convenience, uh, privacy to block your, the views from the backyard, and to have some uh, privacy, um, and, and you said safety, do you have any other uh hardship as to why this uh shed needs to be in that location as opposed to further behind your house?
Well, well, the major, it's, it's, as we say, who we're here, it's a convenience, you know, for example, I know my, you know, I have a two-car garage, right, and the family's getting big and they're crowded, and I need to put my equipments and my tools and into the shed, and it's close to the garage site. And, you know, for example, I have a snow blower, there's no way I can move from the back over there to the driveway to move my snow blower, things like that, to clean up. So that's a convenience, another thing, you know, as I said, it's it's a privacy, and the kids feel safer when you have a shed over there to block the view, block everything, they can run around the backyard. And I, I like to have it over there. And it's a beautiful shed, as I say, you know, it's a beautiful one, we even put the windows and the dormers on the side of the row, you know, to, to, in order not to interfere with the entire uh appearance of the community.
Uh, well, the reason I'm asking is that it, it is possible that you could move this shed, is that right?
Yes, but it's gonna be very costly, and you need to do the foundation and move things around, and you know, it's, and, and also, as we say, if, if we move that shed way back over there, and there's there's no point to have, for us to have a shed, because we wanted the convenience over there.
And, and I was gonna ask you, you mentioned a, a pond behind the shed, and Garrett, if you'd put up the pictures of the, what's next to the shed, I don't recall, I drove by there today, I don't recall seeing a, a pond. There's a couple more recent pictures that show it up a little closer, I think, uh.
So, so, I'll just pull up, um, because I, can, I know the reference, I was out there, so uh, the, the pond that Mr. Jin was referring to is a um, uh a rain garden that's located, but that's, I'm circling it right here, so there, there's some trees right here, and it's a depression um, that on the survey for the property, uh, the roof, the gutters from the house all drain to this area. Um, so it doesn't, it doesn't hold water, um, it just detains water on sight and allows it to infiltrate into the ground.
Yeah, and, and a lot of time over there, you know, in the winter, this, this winter is different, a lot of time in the winter, you can see ice and water, and summertime, you're ready, it contains water for a long time over there.
Okay, and it also prevents water from running down, I understand your house, the way I viewed it is higher than the neighbor behind you that whose house is being built, it would otherwise run down into their property, right? Otherwise, if you, if you didn't have a retention uh, area for the water there, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any other questions. And um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go through the list in order, Commissioner Weiner. Uh, and I should indicate, and I apologize, that for this hearing, I'm gonna ask for uh Commissioner Marsh to vote uh, in lieu of uh Commissioner Llewellyn for this particular hearing, so I'm appointing him.
Are we able to vote, I, I'm sorry to be a little out of order, but is, are we able to vote without the notice being correct on this?
We, we kept, in my opinion, um, and I'll be overruled if the commission wants by vote to um, that we shouldn't actually vote today, but if we're, we're concl- concluding the hearing, those who participate in this hearing are the ones that have to vote uh, next time if we're just reopening it for purposes of the of the uh vote.
And I understand it, but wouldn't we have to open it for purposes of allowing any member of the public to comment?
Uh, I would think so, yes, based on the fact that the uh notice was defective.
Okay, I agree.
Right, but I, but I'm still gonna, because we have an absent commissioner, I am gonna appoint Commissioner Marsh, alternate Commissioner Marsh to vote, to, in place of Commissioner Llewellyn for this hearing. All right, and so we'll start though with Commissioner Winner, do you have any questions, sir?
Nope, I have no questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Marsh?
No.
Commissioner Healy? I'm sorry, I didn't hear an answer.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I thought I wasn't read in on this one.
No, but as far as asking questions, everybody gets to, to ask questions whether you're voting or not.
No, no, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Walsh?
No questions.
Right, and I'm gonna ask, if anyone is, is, has their microphone on and they're not speaking, it's, I'm hearing background noise that's cutting out some of the commissioners, so I asked you to mute your um, microphone, please, if that would make it a little bit easier to hear. Um, including maybe the applicant can, can uh mute, thank you. Um, Commissioner Nadine?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Cloud?
No questions.
Commissioner Callahan?
No questions.
And I've already asked my question, so um, I will just indicate in case some people are here on this call, does anyone who is listening and able to uh comment, wants to comment with regard to this application? And um, hearing no- nobody, I'm, and Commissioner, I mean uh Mr. Dagel, did we hear from uh anybody with regard to this application?
I just, I did receive one phone call, but they were just asking about, about it, they didn't have any problem with it. Um, they saw the sign out in the front yard, that's all.
All right, and um, and in the same vein, does anyone here wish to, that's in- involved in this and is on this uh hearing, want, wishing to speak in opposition to it, please indicate at this time. And again, I'm hearing, I'm hearing nothing, so um, in that case, I will close the the hearing, we will not take a vote tonight, we will also continue this matter um, to the March meeting, um. And so we will um simply continue the matter to March for purposes of a, a vote on the matter, all right? Um, there is a third matter that, um, it's my understanding that because of technical, and, and again, I apologize, Mr. Jin, that um, we weren't able to conclude the matter tonight, but I hope you heard the discussion with regard to the previous matter involving the Thurisins that if we were to vote and then someone challenged the meeting because it violated the uh, the laws on open hearings, uh, we would have to do this all over again, so I hope you understand that we can't take a vote tonight.
And that's okay, I completely understand, but thank you.
All right. Um, and uh, for the next matter, I understand, Mr. Dagel, that um, we need to uh, make a motion to continue that hearing in any event to the next meeting because of issues with notice, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, the, the applicant failed to meet the mail requirement by the deadline, um, so staff's just uh requesting that the public hearing be continued to the March twentieth meeting.
All right, so for those purposes, um, we could, we'll call them, the hearing to order, and um, for this, I will appoint uh, alternative, alternate Commissioner uh Winner, and uh, in lieu of Commissioner Llewellyn, and ask that uh, entertain a motion for uh continuance.
Move to, move to continue the third matter on this evening's agenda to the hearing set for March twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, that's by Commissioner Callahan, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, I don't think we need a roll call for this, so I'll just say all in favor.
Aye.
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 And I, all, any opposed? Hearing none, the, the uh continuance has been approved to the March meeting, all right? Um, moving on to the minutes uh, for the last January seventeenth meeting, um, I'll entertain a motion, I will first note that um if we go down to the, the hearing, the second hearing, I had noted that uh, at the last meeting af- after Commissioner Winner left the meeting, uh, and before the, the thirty Mountain Lane matter was heard, that Commissioner Marsh was appointed to uh, vote on behalf of uh, the I, I believe it was Commissioner um, whoever was missing last time, was it Commissioner Llewellyn as well?
Hmm, no, he was there.
He was there.
Yeah.
Oh, then, what, somebody wasn't there, it was a Commissioner Nadine, were you absent last month?
Yes, yes, she was.
I was absent.
Right, so it was, um, so we appointed uh, Commissioner Marsh to vote on behalf of Commissioner Nadine, so I would ask that, I would note that there should be a reference to that at the beginning of the hearing uh, for the thirty Mountain Lane matter, so uh, with that amendment, um, would, would, uh, is that a friendly amendment to you, to your uh, motion? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes by somebody.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so the minutes are approved with the um amendment that we just talked about. Um, let's just move on, there's the planner's report. Could we um, hear from you, Mr. Dagel, about status?
Yes, so uh, a couple uh, commission members have expressed an interest uh, to returning to in-person meetings. Um, I, I just wanna make it clear that we can have a discussion on this, um. However, i- if the choice is to return to in-person meetings, it, it's not a hybrid approach for the commission members. Um, all commission members need to be attendance at the meetings in order to participate, barring any extenuating circumstances, uh, illness, um, childcare, um, things of that nature, uh, traveling for work, um, ev- all commission members need to be in attendance in order to participate in the meeting, um. If the decision is to return to in-person meeting, um, that would take effect in April, uh, given there is a uh town council meeting conflict, there are town council budget workshop potential conflict in March uh, for the council chambers, um, so we, we would still meet in on Zoom in March, um, if you want to, to can go back to in-person, um, then we would resume meeting in person in April. Um, we, I mean, we can continue the discussion in, at, to the, in the March meeting. Um, if you so fit, if we don't want to make a decision tonight, but just wanted to make that on the, put that on the table. Um, I'll leave it up to the chairman if we want to do a vote, uh, or, or roll call vote, I'm sorry, um, or just, just get everyone's general opinion.
Yeah, I, I'll just note that I had a conversation um the last couple of days with our land use attorney for the town, Bob Di Crescendo, and he, this is what he told me. He said that in most of the communities where he is uh, involved as a, as an attorney for the town, most of the commissions are going back to in-person. Um, some of the meetings are then hybrid to facilitate uh, uh, attendance by applicants and those who wish to speak by allowing them to attend remotely. Um, but I note that uh, one of the issues that, that um, now has been highlighted is the fact that because of an incorrect um, Zoom link, we are unable to vote on matters, and we've, in a, in a sense, frustrated members of the, the public for, for that reason, we are an elected board. Um, in a way, we should be communicating and interacting more with the public um, as such a board, and so it's my, I, I think, uh, there are a couple other members that have expressed this similar views for other reasons. Um, why the meeting should be going back to in-person, um, as far as I understand, the, the emergency related to the pandemic is um about to conclude in the next couple of weeks, so that's no longer a reason. If however, you know, the pandemic uh, there's a resurgence, obviously, we can revisit this at any time. The statute that was passed in twenty twenty-two, uh, Public Act twenty-two dash three allows the board to uh, conduct either in-person, remote, or hybrid meetings. Um, let me just read these notes here. Um, we have the technology now to uh permit both. And um, it's my understanding that the statute now actually requires that uh, if people cannot attend in person, that is, um, applicants, members of the public have to be able to um uh, to be able to uh, appear remotely using equipment for those purposes. Um, does anyone else wish to comment? I know that, um, yes, we'll start with Commissioner, I think, I see Mr. Marsh, Commissioner Marsh has raised his hand.
Yeah, uh, un- unfortunately, uh, we have two sick people in this house. I have cancer. I am still have my heart problems.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, uh, Harry, can you speak up, please?
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Un- unfortunately, we're in a position where my wife has.
My mic's on.
Excuse me. When my wife has cancer, I have a heart condition. And it's much easier for me to remain with this group, who I like very much. And uh, coming out at night is a very difficult thing because it's only the two of us. So I would really prefer using this at least until the end of the physical year.
All right, does anyone else wish to comment right now? I, I will just note that, um, it was my understanding that if a person has a health reason that an accommodation could be made even for board members, that although the that when you have a meeting in person, it does not preclude uh, members of a board who have health issues to um uh, attend remotely, and it becomes a hybrid meeting, and it has to be posted as such, so I don't wanna um, make this an all or nothing, but I, I don't know if that assuages your concerns, uh, Harry, but that was my understanding in speaking with uh, Bob Di Crescendo, so I just throw that out there.
And that's my understanding as well, and with that caveat, uh, I, as secretary, would state my strong preference that we return to in-person meetings.
That's good, but let me just. That's good, but let me just finish what I was about to say, please. Okay, if everything is getting better, fortunately, I prefer in-person meetings myself. But I'm just giving you the facts that occur on my behalf.
Right. I mean, I I hear you and I and I I don't disagree with your concern, but I'm saying that based on my understanding, we'll get this clarified, that if a member has a health issue that would preclude or or make it difficult to attend in person, that we as a board, and I think think as a community would certainly approve of a hybrid meeting where those that would need to could attend remotely and those that would attend in person would attend in person. So
I agree with that definitely.
Chairman Schonhardt?
May I? Yes.
Yes. So so that, Harry, I believe that that would qualify under our health reasoning of why you you could still be virtual. So the meetings will still be hybrid. There'll still be a Zoom link for the public. And for if someone has a lawyer or something, someone that can't make it to the meeting in person, that would still be available, but it would be that the commissioners would have would barring health concerns would have to be in person.
I have no problem with that at all.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to comment at all on this issue right now?
Bob does.
I think you're muted, Bob.
You're on mute, Bob.
Yeah, I can never tell what what the line makes. I I I agree with everything that's been said. I think returning to in-person meetings is a good thing. Assuming we do agree to do so, I will not be able to be at the April or May meetings. And I have no good excuse. I just won't be able to. But but I still think it's a good thing.
All right. I mean, we don't have to vote on anything. I just was opening it up and Chris, you want to speak?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I assume if that's the direction that the board wants to go, that I will go alongside it. I would just say that between now and and June 7th, it's going to be more difficult for me to make it in person, given my work at the legislature, that it's going to start going into extra innings at night. So it may be difficult for me to make it in person. But if that's the case, then you know, we have alternates for that reason, right? I just may not be able to make all of them. Unless John Healy wants to agree to the budget, we can all get out of here.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, that I place myself associate myself entirely with Commissioner Claude's remarks.
I'll see you tomorrow up there, brother.
You will.
All right. So Steve or Sarah, do you want to add anything?
No, I'm good either way, in person or separate.
Okay. Right. Well, you know, we've got a couple of months. Who knows what's going to happen between now and April? So you know, we may all be in bunkers by then having meetings. So we just don't know. All right. So I'm gonna unless anyone else wants to add anything to this, I would say that we'll just save this. If anybody wants to make any note in March, sometime after that, we'll make a decision about having a meeting in person in April. So moving on, there's one other matter on the planners report. And it's a follow-up to the 61 Eli Road clear cutting on the Avon Mountain and Commissioner, Mr. Daigle, I was understanding you were you're going to give us an updated report on that.
Yes. So I shared everyone the minutes for the TPZ meeting from February 13th. I apologize. The public hearing opened. We received some information for the restoration plan, but the Plan and Zoning Commission is looking for a certified arborist report on the trees that were cut and the tree and making sure that the trees that will will be planted will survive. So the hearing was left open to the March, no, February 27th TPZ meeting, which is next month, which is Monday. Sorry, not next Monday, Monday. I did include the minutes with the agenda review in case anyone was interested.
Right. And and I just wanted to add myself. I attended that meeting. It was remote and and listened to what was I did not comment. But I was a little concerned about a couple of things, one being that you know, Mr. Wilson still had not, I guess he consulted with an arborist. He still did not have an arborist even look at the property. And he submitted what I could say was nothing more than a he took one of the aerial GIS images that was presented at our hearing and used maybe Photoshop to put a couple of circles on it. And he said, there's my plan, which was unacceptable to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He was supposed to have submitted an actual report by an arborist by Thursday of last week, and I understand he did not do that either. So you know, I I've expressed my concern at our last meeting that Mr. Wilson is not did not take the cease and desist order seriously. Did not take our vote to uphold the cease and desist order seriously. The other thing that I'm concerned about is there are two other things I'm concerned on. One, he said, he said that he had no that his purpose, let me rephrase this, he said that he knew and he was well aware that he needed a permit to do this, but decided not to get one is what he told them. Number two, he claimed that all of the trees, he repeated that all the trees were dead and were simply weeds such as sumac trees, which I believe the evidence was to the contrary at our hearing. And the more disturbing thing is he said to that to the TP and Z that he had no intention of cutting these trees to improve his view, although if I recall, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Winner or one of the other commissioners point blank asked him if he thought that improving his view to what it was back 20 years ago is part of the reason he did what he did. And he admitted it to our hearing that that was his his primary purpose. So I I want to follow up with this. That's why it's still a matter that we should be aware of. But I wanted to ask the board members whether they're they wish to at least send some kind of a a concern or issue of the board to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission about the delay and the lack of of compliance by by Mr. Wilson before they consider any plan, especially since he's telling them there was only dead, you know, scrap and weeds that he cut down and nothing more. So anyone want to comment on that?
I agree. Absolutely.
Absolutely what? I mean, I'm just throwing this out.
Mr. Marsh was agreed.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right. So so I was going to suggest that we that somebody make a motion that we simply express the concern of our board that the applicant has not complied with with our vote, our decision to uphold the cease and desist order and that the delay has not resulted. I believe the vote had been to require that he submit a plan within 10 days, and that was last November. Here we are at the end of February. He still has not submitted such a plan, a restoration plan. So to express the concern of the board, this board, that the applicant has not complied with anything with the ruling of this board from last November. Would anyone make such a motion? Or they wanted to, let's start with having a motion. We can discuss it.
Can we? Okay, I don't mean to get us off track, but I think it is on track. I did ask the question of the applicant that that you mentioned, Mr. Schonhardt, and he did say exactly what you said he said. I actually voted against your motion because I wanted to give him time to apply voluntarily. And he clearly has not. And and if it's within our purview, I would be willing to do a lot more than express concern. I would be going to start assessing penalties.
I would have may just respond to that. I was of that opinion until we heard last month from the town planner about the carrot and stick approach. And I was convinced by that that we should you know, I I don't want to use the term give him as much rope as he needs, but you know, to basically hold off on seeking some kind of of enforcement at this point without it being a formal agenda item. So that he would have noticed that we are considering doing it to see whether maybe by this next meeting, he actually has submitted an arborist's report. And you know, things are going to go on and on at the rate they're going. I remember in looking at the minutes of that November meeting that he asked whether any decision of that board is appealable. So of course, if he appeals the plant, the the planning zoning rejection of what is clearly not a sufficient plan, he could appeal that to the Superior Court. It could take years. In the meantime, nothing is getting done. Nothing is being assessed. He did not appeal the ruling of this board or the cease and desist order. So just, you know, I noticed there's there's some hesitation here. So I'd like some to hear from more people. I don't want to just be putting this out there on our own, but you know, we have if anything, we have we have some authority. We're an adjudicative body. And if we uphold town staff because someone deliberately violated the town ordinances, there's got to be some mechanism by which we can at least express our concern that there that our votes and our decisions are not being taken seriously. It would be the same as if you know, if we voted down a variance and somebody built it anyway. Right? It would be, in my view, would be as you know, flagrant as that. So you know, all I'm saying at this point is just to express our concern that the applicant is not complied with our with our November 2022 vote.
To whom would we to whom would we express our concern?
To the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is meeting next week on what day is it, Garrett?
Monday.
Monday.
I would agree with sending some sort of information to them about the situation.
Right. Could you put that in the form of a motion?
A motion to send a memo to town planning and zoning regarding a lack of compliance in our November order regarding 61 Eli Road.
Can we have a second on that?
Before we have a second, can I ask Commissioner Nadine, would you be willing to amend the motion to include that if they agree that we would seek enforcement action on our own?
I don't have a problem with any of that. Do we want to give him one last, you know, if within you know, X 15 days or you know, whatever the if the other board members think we should put a timeframe on it, then yes, I would agree. That we'll be filing enforcement action if he doesn't provide the plan.
So just for the board's clarification. So there is already enforcement action. The the enforcement order is just held because there is a pending TP and TPZ application. If he were to not meet the requirements of the application and the board and the the board, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission were to deny the application for lack of compliance with the regulations, then the the existing cease and desist order would resume until such time that he made the proper application. So there is there is an order.
Go ahead, Harry.
Well, then what do you do if they aren't following the order? What is the next step, Garrett?
That's up to town staff.
Yeah, the the fines are would would tally.
Yeah.
And until such time as the town would have to take legal action.
And that's that's why I don't know that we're just commenting. That's why I appreciate the sentiment. I just don't know when an expression of concern, either the TPZ is going to approve the property owner's application or it's not. And it sounds at the moment, you know, if it's just a whatever, you know, aerial picture taken off the internet with a couple of circles photoshopped on it, it doesn't sound like that's going to be the case. And therefore, the penalties in the order that we upheld would be assessed. So I'm not opposed to the sentiment of the making and voting upon such a motion. I just don't think it would have any effect.
Well, maybe it's premature. We should wait and see what happens at the meeting.
That's what I'm saying. And I agree with Commissioner Nadine that if the if the TPZ is going to meet this coming week anyway, that I I don't know how an expression of concern from ZBA would affect anything or change the outcome.
All right. So does anyone else else wish to comment? And I'll just say one thing before. My concern was that the applicant stating things to the members there that was apparently went uncontested because I don't know if Garrett was even was part of it, but which were untrue. He said all those trees were dead. It was a similar argument he made at our hearing, which I believe we found to not be credible credible. So you know, we saw the leaves on the trees. So I guess my concern has to do with, you know, nobody, nobody who testifies at these hearings is under oath. So there's no penalty for just say making stuff up. And it's very difficult as a as a board, when you're making decisions without requiring people to testify under oath, and and what are you making your decision based upon? So the reason I suggested that we just express some concern to that board is the is the what appears to be the dilatory tactics, which I'm not, I'm not saying that's what's going on, but that seems to be what it appears to be, at least on objectively on the surface. So that's that's why I raised it. So does anyone else want to comment while we're all here?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, you know, I had the occasion to be with a young man that works for Mark Wilson at a my kid's basketball game at Kingswood. He approached me knowing that I'm on the commission and asked me what was going on because he said, quote unquote, that they had not heard or gotten the right recommendations yet about or proper recommendations about what to do, which I found very interesting. So I guess my question is more to Garrett. When's the last time you spoke to his team about this issue? Because they're claiming that they're ready and willing to participate, but they just don't know what to do next, which I find, again, not highly credible. But does that jive with what your experience has been, Garrett?
So we have been in contact with Mr. Wilson on and off over the past month and a month and a half to once explaining what we need. I know he stated at the TPZ meeting that he was waiting on the report from the arborist that he hired and not yet received it. And that's what staff was waiting on prior to the hearing opening. And that's the reason why the hearing was continuing to give him and the arborist time to prepare the the documentation that that staff was looking for to share with the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. And even prior to the application that was made to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, staff did share a similar application that had been filed by someone a little down the street that had done the exact, almost the exact same work where they had cleared trees on the ridgeline without a permit. And staff had sent a zoning enforcement order, and they chose not to appeal and just went straight to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. So we even shared with with him the application that they had presented and prepared. And I believe he said he was working with the same arborist.
So Garrett, are you saying that you showed him what a what a restoration plan would look like based on what someone else had done?
Correct.
And he still hasn't submitted it. Right?
Correct. Not, well, not to my knowledge, as of, as of this afternoon. Just in case, disclaimer.
All right, so what, what do we want to do, you know, I mean. Do you want to, do you, do you want to, um. To continue with your motion, Sarah, do you want to, does anyone want a second per motion? Rather than go right to enforcement, I think that maybe that's out, as Commissioner Callahan points out, that might be outside of our. At this point, outside of our, um, jurisdiction, we can't force. The town or anybody to, to enforce anything, that's the job of town. Uh, staff. What we can do is express our concern, I guess we have the right to go to court ourselves, I've seen cases, but I don't know if, know if we're ready to do that. So. Do you want a second, Sarah, uh, Commissioner Nadeem's, um, motion just to express our concern about the lack of, of compliance? And then for now, leave it at that? And send that to TP and Z?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right, uh, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Should we do, does, do, do we need a roll call? Is anyone, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. All right.
I think, yeah.
All right, so, um, and, and I just request, uh, Garrett or, um, Sandy that, that. That our minutes be sent to the TP and Z, at least the draft be sent before Monday?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the only other item that I see on our agenda is adjournment, so, um. Can I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, by Commissioner Callahan, any second?
Second.
Commissioner Walsh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good evening, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.